Hello, everyone. It's Monday, September the 12th. Regretfully, we've got an additional 10, 12 deaths that I need to report to you. And if, again, I would ask that you please keep all these folks in your prayers. And especially if you know these families, please, please, someone reach out to them. And just the biggest thing and the worst thing of all is if you have a tragedy in your life, and then all of a sudden you turn around and you feel like you're alone. And we don't want these people to feel that at all. Please keep these 12 great West Virginians in your prayers. The 7323rd death is a 59-year-old female from Greenbarr County. The 7324th death is a 90-year-old male from Wayne County. The 7325th death is 70-year-old female from Moncahelia County. The 7326th death, an 80-year-old male from Upsher County. The 7327th death, a 69-year-old male from Hardy County. The 7328th death, a 75-year-old male from Putnam County. The 7329th death, an 88-year-old female from Boone County. The 7330th death, a 64-year-old female from Jackson County. The 7331st death, a 75-year-old male from Randolph County. The 7332nd death, a 64-year-old male from Roan County. The 7333rd death, a 68-year-old female from Canal County. The 7334th death in West Virginia is a 94-year-old female from Nicholas County. We have 2,932 active cases in West Virginia now. We have 1,883 new positive cases. That's a big, big, big number when you figure that so many people have the home test kits now, and there's so many people that are probably testing positive that we don't even know about it. You know, our daily percent positivity level is 11.71. Our cumulative rate is at 8.59. The recovered cases in West Virginia are 582,058. 305 people are hospitalized, 57 in the ICU units, and 12 on ventilators. And there's six gold counties in West Virginia. Before I go any further, I'd like to just say just this, that we're probably a little bit delayed. You know, we just did a proclamation in regard to childhood cancer all across this land, but especially in West Virginia. You know, kids are our most special gift of all. We all know that. And there's a whole lot of kids that are really, really, really suffering today. And their families is just plain off the chart. And absolutely, I ask that you join in prayer with me and Kathy, myself and Kathy, and all West Virginians in trying to some way, somehow resolve this dreaded killer, especially in kids. I mean, these kids are so precious. You know, there was families out there that had lost the fight, but they still had so much love in their heart and so much wonderful memories of their children. And there's children that are still in the fight. And lots and lots of kids out there that were fighting for the kids that are in the fight and those that we've lost. Good, good, good stuff. You can learn so much from our children, whether it be, you know, Kyler or a little kid that came up and read the proclamation, read all the way through the entire proclamation. His name was John. And Donovan and all of his classmates and all the hard work and just effort and love that they're extending to all that are really having a really tough go with this. So we're going to continue to pray in some way, somehow, we're going to win this battle. And these kids that are sick right now, we're going to pray, and we're going to pray hard that they're going to win the battle. And I believe it in my heart that they are. Oh, boy. Now, if I could get back to this, and this bouncing around is tough stuff. But I remind you about your booster shots. If you're 12 and older, you can get a booster shot right now. We started with those that are 65 and older, but as we have vaccine, you're eligible at 12 and older right now. Our numbers, like I said, are continually just slowly, slowly getting better, but they're getting better. Information on our vaccine calculator and all the stuff about COVID on our website is all available, and the registration for this vaccine calculator that will remind you is all up on our website as to when to get your next shot. I have just recently taken, you know, the Omicron booster. I am an absolute believer in these vaccines in every way. I am respectful in all ways to those that decide that they don't want to do that. You know, the only side effect that I've had whatsoever is a little bit of a sore arm, you know, but I'm a real believer. I've had the Omicron booster, and I really encourage, if you are eligible for that at this time, that you move forward and get that. 108 outbreaks in our long-term care facilities, none in our church communities. Corrections are way down, 30 inmate cases and 24 staff cases right now. I remind you about the homeowner's assistance program. Like I've said, if you can, we can get you qualified. It can maybe really help and put some dollars back in your pocket if things have really been really tough. And I know, I know they've been tough on a lot of people. I remind you about giving blood. It could not possibly be more important. Now, let me tell you this, and I'm going down, you know, 2:15 today, I'm going to be with the Marshall football team and our head coach, Coach Huff, and our wonderful president, Brad Smith, and a lot of the folks at Marshall. I'm going there, you know, to celebrate and to congratulate them on something that happened that is flat unbelievable. I mean, if you just think about just this, they not only defeated a major, major, major college football team, they beat Notre Dame at Notre Dame. I mean, I don't know how in the world it could get any better than that. The number eight ranked team in the entire country at Notre Dame, at Notre Dame. You know, it is unbelievable what is happening at Marshall University. And, you know, we started way back when, you know, not many, many years ago, but say three or four years ago, and we've got absolutely excitement at the campus now. There's so many good things happening. You know, I salute the Board of Governors. I salute the great new president and unbelievable football coach. All the excitement that's going on at Marshall is really, really unprecedented, and it's really, really good. You know, I've got to just say just this, that, you know, I was there. Kathy was there the night the plane went down. I was in, now the dorm name is Holdren or whatever like that. I don't know exactly what it is, but it was South Hall. Kathy was in Twin Towers. And all of a sudden, we get word that there's a plane crash at the Huntington Airport. Many of us were really worried that it could be, it could be our football team and a lot, a lot, a lot of folks that we really loved. And sure enough, that's what it was. Well, it was really tough. I can promise you to God above, you can't fathom how tough it was, but it was really tough. And the next year, the young thundering herd some way, somehow beat Xavier. And literally, probably in victories, the most profound victories, that probably still ranks the number one. But in many, many, many ways, I don't know how in the world you wouldn't share that number one with this victory that just happened in South Bend, Indiana, you know, against Notre Dame. You know, and I love all the incredible excitement that Coach Pruitt brought to us. All the unbelievable wins, the national championship, the wins that Coach Pruitt brought us were unprecedented. You know, I talked to him that night, and I wasn't able to attend a game, but I absolutely talked to Coach Pruitt and lots and lots of folks. I talked to the head coach, Coach Huff, and with the entire team on the plane as they were leaving. You'll never know, you'll never know what this means to Kathy and Jill and myself, all Marshall graduates. You'll never, absolutely never know how meaningful this is to Southern West Virginia and all the good stuff that this can bring us. You know, it is truly a celebration beyond belief. I got to tell you this in Coach Pruitt's words because I love his enthusiasm, and he is so stuck on on about his school, Marshall, he's proud. He's really, really proud. He was there. He said, when he was leaving, a lot of people were saying, well, where is Marshall? Where are they located? And he said, they'll know where we are now. And he said, then a lot of people were just in awe over the fact of how great the Ohio State football team was. And he said, bring them on right now, and we'll kick their ass too. Well, you know, I just, like I said, I cannot tell you how excited I am about how great a victory it was for Huntington, for the state of West Virginia. And I say this too, you know, West Virginia University, from the standpoint of their game against Pittsburgh, they had to game one, and Pittsburgh is the 17th ranked team in the country. And really and truly, then they really kind of stubbed their toe a little bit with Kansas. But I really believe that Coach Brown will get them going, and we'll have a lot of great, great, great stories to tell about West Virginia University before this is over. So we want, we want all to do good, do we not? And as we spread that across West Virginia, we'll just let, let it ring everywhere. You know, absolutely, we want all to do good. But nevertheless, again, at this moment and everything, congratulations, Marshall. And I'm sure WVU is going to have a lot, a lot of reasons for us to be congratulating them before this is, this season's over. Last thing I've got, you know, on Saturday, I issued a proclamation calling the West Virginia Legislature to convene in special session at 1:30 PM today. Two things, and I'll be real fast, two things. First of all, to consider a certified industrial business expansion development program that basically is going to encourage more and more and more development coming into the state of West Virginia. And the second thing is we want to set aside another $150 million for our roads. It's going to be 125 million that's allocated for resurfacing, 25 million for equipment in all 55 counties in the state. We're going to have a minimum of two projects in every county. It's basically 1,423 lane miles. You know, it's just more and more and more good stuff coming. You know, the road maintenance, our road repairs, all the different things that were going on in highways in regard to roads. We sold a lot of equipment, you know, on watches before I got here. And literally, at the end of the day, when I got here, we didn't have any way to even take care of our roads. And we have resurfaced all across this state in every way. We have pulled ditches, and we have thicked slips, and absolutely on and on and on. And we're going to stay at it until absolutely we have the best roads of any place in the nation. And I congratulate Secretary Riston and all the great work that they're doing in highways. And just keep doing it. You make us all really, really proud, and we're going to keep pouring it on, and we're going to get every single road before it's over. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Governor. Let's now go to Dr. Clay Marsh, our coronavirus czar.
Good morning. And as the governor said, there is much to celebrate in West Virginia, and we do join him in congratulating Marshall's football team. And that was an unbelievable victory for our state and for Marshall University. But also, we need to continue to be cognizant of the fact that still in the U.S., we see on average several hundred people dying every day of COVID-19. And as the governor suggested, having the up-to-date booster shot with the new Omicron booster shot is really important for us. And we know that's one of the primary sort of things that each West Virginian can do to protect your health and protect people in all of our communities. And please go to the vaccine calculator to see if you are eligible for the new Omicron booster. And if you are, please consider getting that shot. One of the things that's come up recently is particularly, as the governor said, with all the home tests that we have, that many people may be testing themselves at home, and therefore, we may be undercounting the number of real cases of COVID-19. It's also important to realize that although these rapid tests are really very good, they're not absolutely 100% sensitive and specific for people who might have COVID. So it's possible that you could have COVID and still have a negative rapid test. And that's the reason why we very much suggest for people who have symptoms that could be consistent with COVID, who even if you have negative rapid tests, consider going and getting a PCR test, a genetic test. And you can get that at local drugstores or pharmacies, also at healthcare entities like hospitals and clinics, county health departments, et cetera. So please go ahead and test yourself because the PCR test is much, much more able to detect smaller amounts of COVID-19. And we also know that during the BA5, the new Omicron variant, the BA5 variant surge, which we are seeing the kind of the peak and plateauing now and decreasing in many parts of the country, then we know that for this particular type form of COVID-19, the symptoms come on much faster, and people are infectious much faster. As few as two to three days, people can be infectious. So be cognizant that if you do have even symptoms of sinus, et cetera, please go ahead and test yourself. And if you are negative by rapid tests and those symptoms continue or get worse, please go get a PCR test. Last thing I'll say is that it's now recognized that for much of America, we have seen a decrease in life expectancy so that children born today are likely to live less long than their parents. And we haven't really seen that consistently since the, really, the last world war. And for some of our, parts of our society, our Native American Indians particularly, their life expectancy now is on par with what was seen on comparative terms in 1944. So we know that we've lost about three years of life expectancy overall, more in Native and indigenous peoples' life expectancy. But all of our country's life expectancy has fallen about three years overall. And compared to other rich countries like us, which have not seen that same reduction in life expectancy, we have lost over five years of life expectancy. And again, we really haven't seen that since the world wars and even since the 1918 pandemic. So it's really important for us, not only with COVID-19, to get our up-to-date vaccination using the vaccine calculator, but also to take care and make sure that we are taking care of each other because we know that a loss of life in younger people from substance use disorder and addiction and other problems are also very much contributing to this. So like we have throughout the pandemic and before, we are a state who cares for each other, and it is really important for us right now to make sure that we're caring for ourselves and each other so that we continue to thrive as a state. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Marsh. Secretary Crouch is also joining us today and is available for questions. We'll now go to questions from members of the media, the first today from Steve Adams with Ogden Newspapers.
Yeah, Steve Adams of Ogden Newspapers here. Governor, I know you all are trying to obviously stay a little bit coy and other state officials on what this economic development announcement is that has something to do with the bill that will be introduced later today for the second special session. But could you provide some sort of explanation as to this bill? I mean, the best way I've been able to describe it for my readers is it would encourage construction, location of high-impact industrial plants when the facilities require access to renewable sources of electricity. So are we talking about businesses or industry that require, say, you know, wind power, solar power, you know, modular nuclear energy? I mean, what are we talking about here with this bill? I mean, people are kind of, kind of looking for some answers as to what this means. Thank you.
Okay, Stephen, you know, you know me. I don't, I don't dodge anything. At least I try really hard not to. And, but here's, here's the whole deal. You know, there are companies that are out there today that are on a 100% solid green quest. We want to, we want to, first of all, be really proud of our fossil fuels in West Virginia and proud of our gas workers, especially proud of our coal miners, do we not? And I'm not going to waver in that whatsoever. So basically, what we've done here is just this, we've done a carve-out. You know, we want to embrace our alternative energies as well. We surely don't want to just make West Virginia a spot where not everyone is welcome. We want West Virginia to be an all-welcoming state. And so in that, we have designated two areas. And the two areas are 20, I think 2,250 acre max areas across our state, two of them. And in those areas, if we have green energy that, or we have, we have a manufacturer or whatever that absolutely cannot come here unless they are absolutely assured that they will be in an area that will be 100% fueled by green energy. Unless, you know, now they want backup power, you know, and so, and Appalachian Power has been a great steward and everything. And so, so we want, you know, they'll, they'll have, they'll have a backup with Appalachian Power. But nevertheless, you know, at least, you know, one of our utilities, I'm not sure exactly, you know, that if it's Appalachian or who it is. But nevertheless, basically what we're trying to do is be all welcoming, not miss the opportunity to bring more and more and more great jobs to West Virginia. So we've come up with a mechanism to be able to do that, you know, and in doing that in a way that still, still doesn't turn our back in any way on our, on our coal miners, our gas workers, or all those that are involved. Because frankly, I feel exactly this. I feel that we should always embrace technology. We should always embrace the alternatives absolutely without any question, but we shouldn't forget who brung us to the dance. And I say brung in that way. But nevertheless, with all that being said, does Jim Justice think, does anybody, does anybody really that can rationally explain to Jim Justice believe that we can tomorrow do without fossil fuel energy? We can't. There's no way. And I don't know how long it will be. It may be a long, long, long time. But nevertheless, absolutely, West Virginia has saved this nation over and over and over with its great coal and now its incredible natural gas. So with all that being said, what we want to do is we want to be all welcoming. And there is a big announcement that's right on the doorsteps, right on our doorsteps, and we hope that we'll be able to do that tomorrow and make you all really proud and really excited as well. That's all I've got.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Next to Charles Young with WV News.
Hi, this is Charles Young with WV News. Just to follow up on that, Governor, so is the legislative agreement, is the legislative leadership in agreement on this? And do you expect it to pass? You know, the last couple of special sessions haven't gone exactly how we planned. We think we can have some more, you know, kind of order this time. Thank you.
Charles, I hope to God above that we absolutely are going to get at doing absolutely the very, very best stuff for our people. Quit playing any level of politics. I mean, there's no one on the planet, there's nobody that absolutely is going to try to convince me or that can convince me that getting rid of your personal income tax, if that is an alternative, that anything can compare to that. And literally, what we've done is we have sat on the sidelines, and we've let people wait, and people that are really suffering through all kinds of inflation woes, and we really need to be helping. We've got their money, and we need to be trying to find mechanisms to get their money back to them now. Now, but with all that being said, in this, this absolutely, you know, one of my first calls was to Chris Hamilton at the Coal Association because I didn't want the Coal Association folks to not be on our side. And we had a great discussion about that, you know. But with all that being said, these people are not coming to West Virginia unless we have this set up for them. I think this is a small, small, small ask for the opportunity that could be coming to this state.
All right. Thank you, Charles. Next to Mark Curtis with the Next Star Media.
Sorry for a little delay there interviewing delegates. I mean, this place, this building, I've never seen so much excitement, Governor. It seems like every week, something new is happening. Now it's these two projects. Last week, it was Stars Battery and Pure Watercraft, and we've seen New Core, and we've seen Green Power. What's the, what ties this all together? What's the recurrent theme that's running through this? And, you know, people wonder, is this going to stop? Are we just on a lucky roll here, or is this just going to keep on going?
Well, Mark, I'm a believer, you know, I quoted Coach Pruitt earlier as Coach Pruitt got a little off color in regard to Ohio State. But I would say, we've learned a way to win, haven't we, Mark? We've really learned how to win. And in doing so, and I don't say this egotistically, but when I walked in this door for 100-plus years, all we knew was we really had a real mechanism to figuring out how to lose. Well, we know how to win now. And do I think it's going to continue to go on and everything? It's going to continue to go on while I'm still here, and I'm on my watch, and I hope and pray that we'll have it set up that it'll continue for decades and decades, if not centuries to come. You know, Mark, there's, there's too many people pounding on the doors, and you can never, and I mean never, find a time when I've told you something that's not true, when I, when I knowingly know it's not true. I make mistakes, but I've told you over and over and over. I have yet to have the first, the first company come to me and say, we'll only come to West Virginia if you'll get rid of that machinery and inventory tax. Nobody. And they keep coming, and they keep coming, and they keep coming. For crying out loud, you know, that's where I don't want us to blow our own legs off and put ourselves in a situation if we have some level of downturn, we're not going to be able to fund the schools or the police or the firemen or whatever it may be. We're going to really be in real trouble. And that probably won't happen until I'm gone, but it could very well happen after that. And so that's my concern. Do I really, do I, would I be a person that would say, gosh, I would love to get rid of the machinery and inventory tax? Of course I would. Would I be a person that would say, first, and we can do this? Now, we can do this today. We can start ourselves on a pathway of getting rid of, you know, getting rid of our personal income tax and get rid of the automobile tax right now. We can do that. I'd be for that, just like that. But really and truly going beyond that in a really more risky way of saying, we're getting rid of the machinery and inventory tax, which will really and truly, now, Mark, let's again be dead level honest. As far as the worker, as far as the worker, that's probably a 600 or 700 billion dollar deal. But the worker's part of that is going to be the automobile tax. Maybe 130 million of the 600 or 700 million is going to people. The rest of it is going to big companies. The rest of it is going to big companies. I got a real problem with that. My company would absolutely benefit from it, unbelievable, off the chart. But I'm not here for my company. I'm here for Toby and Edith out there, the workers. I'm here for West Virginians. So, Mark, do I think there's more and more and more to come? You're dead gum right. You're dead gum right. And we're just going to keep it coming. And you're going to have a hard time keeping up with all the announcements. And I love it beyond belief.
All right, Mark, thank you, Governor. I'll turn it back to you.
I've said enough for one day. You know, listen, I thank everybody, really, really, really appreciate, you know, our great experts and, you know, I appreciate everyone. Thank y'all so much. That's all I've got. Thank you.